All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Ms. Cornetto, would you please call the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino. She mentioned she was gonna be a little bit late, but she will be here. Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein is excused. City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Isu Scharo, Public Works Director, George Castillo, Fire Chief, William McDonald, City Attorney.
Thank you. For a moment of silence tonight, I would like us to keep Anna Klein and her family in our thoughts with the recent passing of her mother. And she has our, certainly my condolences, and I'm sure that of the rest of the staff as well as council. So if you join with me for just a minute. Thank you. I have no proclamations. The only announcement I have is that item six has been, I have pulled it. With that, we'll go to call to the public. Ms. Landers, do we have anything?
Yes, sir, one. This is from Monica Patience. Hello, I am writing to thank Officer Tim DeFor for coming to 206 OK Street today, October 6, 2020. I want to be a good neighbor and thank Officer DeFor when I have a chance at it. There was a traffic jam there today, and one neighbor said she did not want to get involved in our little wars, only wanted to get home. I also do not want to get involved in little wars with my neighbors. Third before got involved and promised to put a patrol on the three scooters parked permanently on city property between 205 and 201 on OK Street. Thank you, Monica Patience.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer DeFor. Accounts payable.
I move that we approve accounts payable in the amount of $332,394. Excuse me, and 57 cents.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll second that. Questions? Hearing none or all of those in favor paying accounts payable signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously, which is 5-0. Consent agenda. Items A through E. Item A, approval of the minutes of the work session Mayor and Council held on September 8, 2020 at 5:30 PM. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on September 15, 2020 at 7:00 PM. C, approval of the resignation of Ken Budge from the Civil Service Commission. D, approval of the appointment of Jennifer Ryan to the Civil Service Commission. E, approval of the appointment of Angela Rockefeller to the Bisbee Arts Commission with a waiver for residency. Does anyone on the council wish any of these pulled for discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
I'll second that. Thank you. We have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number three, new business. Discussion of possible approval to purchase the new mini hydraulic excavator and trailer. Mr. Harrow, Public Works Director.
Sorry, I was muted. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we are seeking to purchase a couple of pieces of equipment. We'll start this evening with the mini hydraulic excavator and a trailer so that the excavator can be taken, transported from the garage to it's wherever we are doing a project. We have worked for quite some time on trying to figure out the best purchase of a mini excavator, something that we dearly need, especially in the old Bisbee area. But definitely you will be utilized throughout all of Bisbee. It's a mini excavator. It will allow us to actually take this excavator in most of the staircases, which we do have sewer lines in. This mini excavator will be mainly utilized by our wastewater collections department. But it will, we can, because we are a small city, we can use it throughout the different departments. This mini excavator will be equipped with a bucket and a thumb as well as the grading piece on the front will be allowed. It'll allow us to, in addition to digging trenches, clear brush, those types of things when needed. In the past, we have rented these because we do not have one currently. We have rented, they usually come in at a rental price of about $2,030 per month. The price of this is, as a new piece of equipment, is $56,829. The price of the trailer is $13,250. We are proposing to purchase this from CAT, which does have a cooperative contract. They have provided us a number of purchasing options. The option that we chose to present in our recommending is a purchase over six years with a $1 purchase at the end of the six years. That purchase price then is $12,662.37 per year. That, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Hanson.
When you rent this mini hydraulic excavator, how often do you rent that during the year?
So last year, we rented it for five weeks, and that's only because that's what we had in our budget. You know, we definitely could use it. We would use it consistently. If when we don't, because we don't have this piece of equipment, when we can't get our full-size excavator, we have to hand dig. And it takes, it's a lot of work for us to hand dig, especially in Old Bisbee. We run into rocks, those types of things. So last year, we did only rent it for five weeks, but...
You froze up there.
Any other questions?
Well, I was waiting for him to come back. Is it for use mostly in Old Bisbee or are there places in the other two boards? That you...
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And...
Absolutely, there are a number of...
Go ahead.
I missed the question, I apologize.
I haven't asked it. I stopped because you started to say more. So, okay, so what line item, I know that the account number, but what account is that, that the money is coming out of?
Yes, that account was budgeted for a capital purchase. That was something that we had planned on when, during the budgeting process. I did, this is something that I planned on asking for approval back when we were starting budget. So this is how long, we've been working on this for a good month to figure out how much we needed to ask for, and then once we decided we felt we had a good price, then we presented it to council.
Okay, so, but we're gonna be obligating almost 13, or 12, a little more than 12 and a half thousand dollars every year for the next six years. And I'm just concerned about the budget, whether we can afford to do that. So...
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know who could, Ms. Coleman or Carrie could. Can anyone shed any light on that? I know that we're kind of looking into the future and looking into a crystal ball, but...
Right. All I would add that is that at my office hour last Thursday, there was quite a bit of talk about deferred maintenance and the cost of that deferred maintenance over time. So this is potentially a piece of equipment that could be used to get maintenance accomplished on a more rigorous schedule than we've currently been able to do.
And I have just one last question. Between the two items, which one need more?
Yep. There you go.
Medical, medical...
I would say, I would say that if between the two items, we probably need the mini excavator more.
I kind of figured that was gonna be the one, but thank you.
Mr. Pollock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harrow. How many heavy equipment trailers do you have in your public works inventory now? If any?
We have one.
One. Okay.
Yes.
What is the life expectancy on the excavator in terms of years?
Um, well, I don't know what I could specifically, let me see if we have anything on here. It's not a question I asked, but with maintenance, I would assume that it would double the six years. That's something, when we get a brand-new one, we have, it comes with a warranty, so I don't know that I can answer that specifically, but I can do some research and get you an answer if that would, something you would like.
That's all right, Mr. Harrow, that's answer enough. You say double the six years, that's good enough for me.
Okay.
How many, how many hours per year do you anticipate this vehicle will be used?
Hours per year? I would say that, let me hear, let me do a quick calculation. I would say thousand, about a thousand hours per year.
Okay, thank you. Do you really believe that two trailers are necessary when we're talking about two pieces of equipment here? Couldn't you get by with just one trailer and two pieces of heavy equipment?
It's possible. Yes, it's possible, if, if that's the wishes of the council, we'd be appreciative of that. It would help either way, if we had, we wouldn't have to be waiting, but if that's what you, if that's what the council wishes to do, we would, we would manage.
Well, I think if I might, Mr. Harrow, if I got Mayor Pro Tem's question right is, is there a reason other than a slight loss of efficiency that one would not suffice for both?
No, it would be, it would be less efficient to be inconvenient, but we definitely, right now, have one heavy equipment trailer, we, we would manage.
But if you purchased two, if you purchased one new one and you have the one in your inventory, you'd have two trailers, right? How many other pieces of heavy equipment move around every day?
Uh, we, we usually, the larger pieces of equipment, the large, we actually drive those to the, to our project sites.
Okay, thank you. And you, in response to Hanson's question, you said that the one that you would prefer, if you could only have one, would be the excavator, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move the purchase of a new mini hydraulic excavator and trailer.
I second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
You're muted, Ms. Johns.
Yes, I'm sorry, aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number four, discussion of possible approval to purchase a new Caterpillar skid steer loader and trailer. Mr. Harrow.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this is a skid steer. This is a skid steer with tracks purchased from the same company with the same cooperative contract. Again, we did recommend the same six-year purchase with $1. By, at the end, we did recommend the second trailer. The skid steer in this case is a, is pretty versatile. I'm sure if you, if nobody's seen one, the bucket itself can be removed and you can put a lot of different types of equipment. Again, we can put a grater on that, we can clear brush, we can put forks on it, use it as a forklift, and actually something that can pick up quite a bit of, of weight. This purchase price is $73,999. The same price for the trailer at $13,225. The annual payment over the six years, $15,855 and 19 cents. Again, this is something that we did spend quite a bit of time doing research on, looking at new used item, used, used equipment, new equipment. It just made more sense to go with the new equipment and get the warranty. This comes out of a line item similar to the excavator. We did a budget for that in the budgeting process, and it is low coming out of a capital purchase line item. But again, I'll take more questions.
Ms. Hanson.
I am assuming that you are renting these if you need them? Or are you using something else to pick up the debris and so on?
Yes, absolutely, we do. When we need, we rent them at that, about that same price.
For $79,000?
No, no, we, we, it's at the same price we've rented the mini excavator. Those we rent, United Rental is the last time we rented those. They come with different prices, they can be per day, per week, and per month. So we usually get it per month because it's a less expensive rate.
And the trailer that comes with this, could the other trailer be used?
Yes, ma'am, it can.
Okay. And how often do you need to rent the, what is it, skid steer?
The skid, again, if we had one, we would be using it consistently. We don't rent it very often because our budget is, allows us to rent it for a month.
Okay.
Maybe two.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Mr. Harrow, as you're aware, the, there's a big question mark about the economic health of the city for the next six months to a year. If you were to live without this for six months and give the excavator and the trailer an assessment period and came back six months from now with this same request, would that be a terrible imposition on you? Or could you make it work?
It would be, it would put some inconvenience, but it would not be an imposition. It's just something that, as I've spent time here with my staff, I asked them what would make them, what do they need to do their job? And one of the first things they said was the the excavator and the skid steer. So that's why we've spent some research on how we could get that. We've, we've worked without it, so we, we would, we would do our work without it. It would just be less efficient. The, I will give you an example. If we had this skid steer, there was some drainage issues in the Warren area where we, it was very difficult for us to put in some V channels along the side of the road because we had to do it. The only, the only piece of equipment we had to put in V channels with was a grater. That's, that's a large piece of equipment. If we had this mini skid steer, we could have gotten that done in just probably an hour because with that, the skid steer would have had the grading attachment on it, and we could have gone in there and transported it and put it in. So it will make things more efficient. Not that we can't do our job without it, but again, if that's something the council would like to do and take some time, again, we can do our job.
Would you still be able to rent a skid steer if and when you needed one?
Yes, absolutely, they are available to us.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Harrow.
Ms. Hanson.
Forgot it, hang on. Is not having the skid steer holding up or delaying maintenance?
Um, I would say yes, because we can't get those, those pieces of equipment to more, to be, for most of the time, we have to either go in by hand or, or use a larger piece of equipment that takes time, as you know now. With, during our pandemic, we don't have our, the, our Department of Corrections crew. And so we are having to do a lot more manual labor when we had more labor available to us. And so, yes, I would say it does, it does take away from us being able to do the maintenance that we need.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the purchase of a new Caterpillar skid steer loader without the trailer.
Second that.
Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Speaking of equipment, the new police unit looks incredibly, it's wonderful. And has everybody seen it? It's out on the street, and I've seen it, and the guys are proud of it, and I have on good authority that is actually like ran the first three days on a half a tank of gas. So that's all really good stuff, so council, you've done good. Now, as soon as Chief Castillo can find a fire engine that runs like that.
Then you have electric fire trucks out there.
There you go. All right. Item number five, discussion of possible acceptance of a grant from the State Historical Preservation Office for the Copper Queen Library Structural Assessment and Improvement of Grant Match in the amount of $13,334 from the Capital Improvement Fund. Ms. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. So I did mention this at your last meeting, that the staff at the library had applied for this assessment grant through SHPO, and they were awarded. The catch is, we have to provide a 40% match for the $20,000 grant, and that comes to the $13,334. They've done an amazing job with the library. I can't wait for everybody to get to see the work that's already been done. However, we have not necessarily addressed all of the major issues, some of them being exterior for that building. So this would give us a way, moving forward, to have a complete assessment and then be able to budget, plan, and apply for grants that were appropriate to the work that needs to be done to preserve that historic structure.
Questions? Motion? I move to accept the grant from the State Historic Preservation for the Copper Queen Library Structural Assessment and Improvement of Grant Match in the amount of $13,334 from the Capital Improvement Fund. Thank you. Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock. Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns. Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval to donate two police vehicles, that's the Crown Victorious, to Naco Sonora, and possible approval to donate one or two surplus ambulances to Cananea Sonora. I can indicate that, I've been talking to Cananea about this for several years. They have none, and they desperately need several ambulances. It's a much bigger city than ours, and they are willing to take anything that we can, we can give them. And so with that, and we have two police vehicles that are sitting there doing nada, and they can certainly be used in Naco Sonora by their department, and it's really great. Great thing that we can do to help our, our neighbors to the south and, and keeping good relations with them. That's my take on it, questions? Ms. Hanson.
Do we know if it's one or two ambulances?
That, I believe in the PAC that it talks about, it depends on if Chief Castillo, it has to do with one being received through a grant, and if it can impact the, if it can be, in fact, sent elsewhere. So it's one for sure, hopefully two, depending on the answer Chief Castillo receives. Chief, do you have anything else to add?
I know I don't, like you, like you just said, we're just waiting to hear back from the FEMA grant on the vehicles if we're awarded. Because we are awarded the one medic unit that we have, we have to save that one to get rid of it. But we do have one that I'm still waiting back from the state. It's sitting down there at the city yard to get back on us, back on that. I've tried several times, they're still having problems with it. So it looks like possibly the police chief and I'll probably just file an abandoned title on it, and then we can have it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think this is just wonderful to do this, and I know that the two police vehicles... And I know that the two police vehicles are out of service and obviously the the one or two ambulances really aren't doing us any good and, you know, they can really, really use them as the mayor says. So I move to approve the donation of two Crown Victoria police vehicles to Nacogdoona and one or two surplus ambulances to Cananea Sonora.
All budgets of a second. All those in favor of the donation signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Number eight, discussion of possible approval to lease the soils building located at seventy six Erie Street from Freeport MacMoran to be used as City Hall. I obviously asked this to be put on. I sent out a a memo to the council last week. And I didn't go into great detail, nor will I tonight, other than to say that our staff is presently staying in some the the buildings they're staying in, it's not safe. We've had electrical brownouts, which means that the electricity fluctuates. Lights go bright and then they go dim and they go bright. That's commonly called a floating neutral. And then last week, we had two different days in which the power went completely out. They had Jim's electric out. I met with him and spoke with him, as did Joe Ward representing us and building, obviously. Jim indicated that well, in lay terms, it's really messed up. There is wiring that is up in the ceiling that is abandoned. Two twenty wiring that is without caps on it and it's live wiring. Now, for those that may remember, we were discovering those same things at the old City Hall before it burned down. I don't want another situation like that. And of course, I don't want our people working in a situation where there's risk of electrocution or just not being able to function because of lack of computers, electricity, et cetera. So with that, I contacted Freeport MacMoran because, as you recall, some of you recall, way back when we started looking for a new temporary City Hall, they graciously offered that building to us. And at that time, the county also offered their their help. And so we went with the county because it was more ready made. Now we're in the position of once again having to move some of our facilities for safety reasons. So I contacted Freeport and discussed for several days the options with them. And incredibly, they have indicated that they will lease us this building year to year to begin. And they will do so at the rate of us paying the tax, that'd be property tax and the utilities. And we've done a cost analysis. Thanks to Carrie and her people helping me out of this. And spreadsheet's been provided to you. If you wanted to add everything up, it indicates that right now, without an abatement of property tax, the new space would cost us three hundred and thirty three dollars a month more. And with the abatement of property tax, it'd be about a hundred and ninety dollars more. Now, that's assuming that we use the same amount of electricity, gas, water that the soils people were using and they they were quite busy in there. So we, you know, we we're lucky that we have that historic knowledge to be able to use to try to make an assessment on this. So that's where we stand. I think it's very important. There are other opportunities should the council wish to even consider staying there. It's an eight thousand square foot building. The four thousand square foot main floor is built out and is basically a a building inside of a building. It has almost new air conditioning, heating, et cetera, et cetera. And then the bottom is an old wine cellar, although it had been a lumberyard. So I don't know where the wine came in, but nevertheless, it's the four thousand square feet downstairs that can be used. And the great thing is that it's ADA compliant or would be because you walk in on the top floor. You walk in from street level, you go downstairs and at the bottom floor, you exit street level also because of the way that it's built. And so there's some great possibilities with it, but on a temporary basis, it's a heck of a deal. And so I have asked for a budget on moving. And I have, as I provided to you, a high figure of seven thousand. And we believe it'd be probably closer to five. But I want to make sure that we're I'm I'm giving as much as, you know, worst case scenarios here. And going back to the other situation, if we are to stay in that building and have the electrical upgraded the way it should be, it will cost us up to forty five thousand dollars. The bid is twenty thousand to get us operating safely and forty to forty five thousand dollars to do it right, which means rewiring the building. So that's where we are. That's literally the bird in the hand or the whatever, whatever that thing is. So questions? Mr. Pollock.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Do we know if there's asbestos in that building?
It's my understanding that there is not, and that's based on the fact of the recent build outs, et cetera. And I can tell you going into the basement, I see no asbestos. It's all wood.
Thank you. That's my only question.
All right. Anybody else? Do we have a? I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson.
No, it's fine. I'm sorry. I just wanted to tell the city employees that since City Hall burned down, you guys have been really great sports. And I'm sorry this is happening to you again. And if there's anything we can do to support you in the move, please let us know.
I won't call you though. Will you, Ashley?
Thank you.
Get it done.
I I obviously agree. Our our employees, our our staff is above and beyond in this. Making absolute lemonade out of lemons. And I think this is a better opportunity for them to actually work. The the location is dynamite. I mean, it's right in the middle of everything. And remember, for those that don't know, that parking lot, by the way, is ours, meaning it's leased to us right now. And if you remember driving by that thing, from the back of that build I just described to Highway eighty can be all parking that we can put city vehicles and employee parking in. So it's really a it could be a a great thing. And we even have the possibility of acquiring additional buildings next to this building, should you want to become more of a permanent situation and further renovations. So Freeport, once again, has been an incredible partner on this. And I would like to publicly thank them once again all the way up to the chairman of the board. They're they're there for us. So with that, do we have any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to lease the soils building located at seventy six Erie Street from Freeport MacMoran to be used as Bisbee City Hall in exchange for paying the utility bills and assess property taxes during our occupancy.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Proten Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Higgins.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Smith.
I. Motion passes unanimously. Good news, bad news, staff.
And the fun begins.
Seriously, Ashley and Ms. Goldman, please call if you need some help.
City managers report. Ms. Coleman.
Yeah, thanks. So last time I reported, I reached out to the U of A regarding one of their spring classes assisting us with the update to the Warren Historic District. I was referred on to the summer class. So I will be providing that information to the professor in charge of the summer project and see if they'll put us on our list. Interestingly enough, this also came up. It was at my office hour as something that was essential to the city in addition to getting historic designation for our neighborhoods in San Jose. One of the folks on the call does take advantage of the state property tax deduction for his property in the Old Bisbee Historic District. And we could certainly make that same opportunity available to our other neighborhoods as something that's essential for our community. So I thought that was that was an interesting conversation. Housing Initiative will be moving forward with financial education workshop on October twenty third. And the invitation will go out in the pay stubs for the firefighters and police officers. And it's been forwarded to Mr. Woody to provide to his teachers. So we're starting with those three groups. Though we do have programs for other government workers, including those who work for county government that we would be able to work with in the future. But I'm just kind of getting our legs under us figuring out how this initiative will move forward. So that's our next step. Jesus, an update on the walkthrough of Tombstone Canyon, please.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. So I did, we were able to complete a walkthrough with our contractor, K E and G. Did I identify some minor issues with asphalt examples might be some asphalt plugging up some of the catch basins. We did identify some areas where the rooftop gutters, the drainage on the asphalt was maybe blocking some of that. So they'll clean that up. In addition, they were, they did do the temporary water-based striping. They actually weren't able to complete it. So what you see out there is actually going to be more, there'll be more markings when they come back and put down the thermoplastic. But while they did that, we did identify some areas where we're going to make some changes. There there are some parking areas along the main street area that the parking is a little bit tight. So we'll make some adjustments there on with some other adjustments going up Tombstone Canyon. I was able to do a walkthrough with the Cochise County Flood Control District. We the we they are going to be doing a model of the new asphalt layer and they're going to be giving that model to us so that we can and possibly look at be some improvements to some drainage. We won't be able to identify those until they give us that actual model. We anticipate having that maybe somewhere in the December timeframe is what they told me. But definitely are are not quite done yet. You know, they definitely are out there lifting manholes in in water valves. I I do encourage the public. If there's something that we don't see, please let me know. If there's if there's, the more eyes, the better. And if there's something there that that we missed, please, we can look at.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to update you on two grant awards. We were awarded the Colonialist Grant for Tin Town for Phase Three of that stormwater improvement project. Thanks to the funds that were provided that provided our grant match through Cochise County. So without that Cochise County flood control money, we understand we would not have been awarded, but I think we're like three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to finish up that project now. So that was awarded. And then Daniel Bouchere had submitted for a FEMA grant award to look at our fire suppression system in Old Bisbee. The conversation led us to talk to Arizona Water Company about upgrading our their water service in Old Bisbee and including fire suppression in their system, which would allow us over time to abandon the old reservoir, fire suppression system, which seems to be a really good solution for Old Bisbee. About a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to help Arizona Water Company complete a complete water study for Old Bisbee. That will push their timeframe ahead by years. And then ultimately, we hope to go back to FEMA to help us build out a plan that's developed under this grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Higgins.
I.
Ready?
Surprisingly, I moved to a German.
I said.
Second. Was that you, Joe?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor of German signify by stating aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Good to see all of you. Stay safe.
Bye.
Stay well. Lots of staff here tonight. Thank you. Good to see you.